Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 13th Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Meeting. I am your Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte and Roma Amundson. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting are available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Those wishing to speak on a specific item today are asked to do so when the item is called by the county clerk. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the county board chair. Those wishing to speak on items relating to other county business not on the agenda may speak during the public comments portion of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. These limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the county board chair. Public comment period will be limited to one hour. If you're here to participate in an item and you need special consideration of a schedule conflict or some other reason, please let the clerk know prior to the meeting so we can accommodate your needs. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on February 6, 2024.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yokum?
Excuse me.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Brings us to item two, claims. Item two A, approval of a claims process through February 13, 2024. And I'll note, there is an amendment for the payroll.
I would move approval of the claims process through February 13, 2024, and include payroll disbursements through February 7, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item two B, approval of a claim including billing for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided Nebraska v. Statute 23-135. And as for Aramark Services Incorporated dated February 12, 2024, for a total of $3,819.41.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Brings us to item three is a special presentation. It's the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office 2023 Annual Service Awards.
Good morning. Thank you for indulging us, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. As you know, every year, our, we have employees and others who are nominated for our service awards, and we make those decisions in December and then make those awards. So I really appreciate your indulgence in allowing us to make these presentations in a public setting. Our first award is a citizen's certificate of merit for Cade Booth. Cade's here. Come on up, Cade. On December 16, 2022, which was after we had our awards meeting for 2022, anyway, about 10:45 in the morning, dispatch received a report of a head-on collision involving a semi-truck cab and a passenger vehicle on Highway 6 between 162nd and 176th Street. The report was that the semi-truck cab was crushed, the driver was trapped in the overturned cab, and the truck was leasing, leaking diesel fuel. Cade came upon the crash before deputies could arrive and began assessing the driver. He assisted deputies in attempting the extraction of the driver from the cab, who needed serious medical assistance and the concern that fire may, that the fuel may start on fire. Rural firemen arrived with extraction tools, and Cade continued assisting in the extrication of the driver with diesel fuel running down on the first responders. Eventually, the driver was free from the wreckage, was transported to the hospital with serious injuries. Cade was instrumental in helping free the driver and his survival. His willingness to intervene and assist this fellow man is deserving of our award of merit. So, Cade, thank you for being willing to get involved. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to see, Flowerday?
Um, I guess it was a surprise when I got the letter from the sheriff in the mail about this incident. Um, I still have the vest that I wore on that day when I responded to the accident, and every time I put that vest on, it still smells of diesel fuel and reminds me of that accident. But it's always a solid reminder that anytime I can help out, spur the moment, whether it be in the right place, right time, I'll always do what I can to help out and use what training I've had through my service in the Marine Corps and first responder training and such to do what I can to help save another. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second award is kind of a combination of a citizen's award, a citizen's certificate of merit, and our life-saving award. Rowan Wasco and Deputy Joshua Kingswood. I think Rowan's going to be a future deputy sheriff. You notice he sat in the back of the room where all the cops were. On February 16 of last year, Josh, Deputy Josh Kingswood was detailed to a medical emergency where a 52-year-old man had fallen down the stairs and was unresponsive. Upon Deputy Kingswood's arrival, the victim was not breathing and did not have a pulse. A 13-year-old friend, Rowan Wasco, a friend of the victim's son, who was staying at the house, revived the victim and began CPR. Deputy Kingswood took over CPR from Rowan. Hickman Fire then arrived and revived the victim, who was speaking and conscious before being transported to the hospital. But for Rowan's willingness to assist his friend's father and Deputy Kingswood's quick response, there may have, well have been a worse outcome to this incident. So congratulations to both Deputy Kingswood and Rowan Wasco for their efforts. Rowan, thank you very much. Appreciate it. The deputies get these awards. They can wear these on their uniforms and so, Josh, thank you again. Okay. Thank you very much. Rowan's mom's here, and she said she needed to get back to work. She works at Norris School, so thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Our exceptional duty award goes to Deputy Corey Lear. I know he's here because I walked over with him. Okay. Corey serves as our team leader for our Honor Guard. And during National Police Week last week, which is the week of May 15, our Honor Guard went to Washington DC and rendered honors during multiple ceremonies at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. They also did a ceremony at the Justice and Law Enforcement Center for Police Week and at the Nebraska Law Enforcement Memorial in Grand Island, which we were the host agency for. Deputy Lear took ownership of these events through planning, training, equipment acquisition, coordination, and ultimately the execution of the honors at these events. The Honor Guard has also presented the colors for Nebraska's sporting events, and these events are attended by family, friends, coworkers of fallen officers, and has brought public acclaim to the, our office and the law enforcement profession. His continued dedication to the profession, to the professionalism, service, and development of our Honor Guard reflects great credit upon him, our agency, and to law enforcement. Corey, thank you for your efforts. I might add, when they were in Washington DC, I think they got rained on at several of those outdoor events, and so put in the extra effort there. So, Corey, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Corey is also, interestingly enough, one of our canine handlers, and his dog, which he selected, is named Dodge after Deputy Sheriff Craig Dodge, who was killed in light of duty. So, our civilian employee of the year, Administrative Service Officer Sarah Sum. Sarah was nominated for not only doing her daily duties for developing and monitoring our budget, preparing financial reports, and processing all of the expenditures and revenue, but accepting a myriad of additional responsibilities throughout our office. She is a coordinator of a forfeited assets committee, monitoring the forfeited assets budget, ensuring purchases comply with federal guidelines, processing expenditure requests, organizing the meetings, conducting email votes when necessary. She's also taken on responsibility for our social media platform. This past summer, she attended an advanced media and public relations conference hosted by the FBI to be able to handle that social media issue. She gained a better understanding of how other agencies run their programs and leveraged social media advantage. During the wildfires in the southwestern part of the county, Sarah updated the public on the status of fires. Eventually, other agencies were pushing out content on the fires that Sarah had developed. She's also accepted the responsibility of screening our non-sworn staff applicants. Once the applicant names are forwarded to our office, Sarah conducts phone interviews and determines if the applicant qualifies for in-person interviews. She also sits on the oral board panel, helps to rank the applicants before they get to the interview stage with, with the chief deputy and myself. Her work has reduced the amount of time it takes to onboard our civilian staff members. For her efforts, we're awarding Sarah our civilian employee of the year. Congratulations. And Sarah's husband Chad with her. Our deputy sheriff of the year is Deputy Rhonda Witt. Deputy Wick received two separate nominations for deputy sheriff of the year. One nomination stated Rhonda is the kind of deputy that every sheriff's office could only dream to be able to have more of. Another stated her positive attitude, superior work ethic, and going above and beyond everyday attitude makes her well-deserving of this award. The first nomination mentioned Deputy Wick helping a newer deputy with a child abuse investigation. The investigation was difficult, very emotionally charged, and consumed an entire shift, which made for a very difficult day. Rather than make her partner stay much later after the shift to complete reports, Rhonda canceled her day off to help her partner gather the information and complete the case reports. She goes out of her way to arrange extra training and experience for her recruits. The other nomination mentioned all the extra responsibility Rhonda has taken on. Rhonda is a field training officer, which is just evidenced by the former nomination. She's an emergency vehicle operations instructor, a child safety seat technician, a member of our bike patrol, and a former member of our Honor Guard. She is a member of our motor vehicle crash team and has earned certification from the Accreditation Commission for Traffic Accident Reconstruction, ACTAR. It's a very prestigious, and not a whole lot of folks around the country have achieved that level of accomplishment. And she is the law enforcement representative for drug court. Not only she's representative for a drug court, but she's been selected as a faculty member of the National Association of Drug Court Professionals to instruct other law enforcement officers from around the nation in the role of law enforcement liaison to their local drug court. Recently, the sheriff's office had agreed to supply tactical flight officers for the state patrol's helicopter. I think you might remember that, that request. Rhonda volunteered for that position and was selected, and it's going to require extensive training course to be on call and available to respond should the air wing be activated. Rhonda is originally from Ravenna. She graduated from Ravenna High School and then attended the University of South Dakota, graduating in 2000 with her bachelor's degree. This April, she'll celebrate her 20th anniversary with the sheriff's office. During the preceding 20 years, she's worked in patrol, where she's currently assigned, as the Waverly Contract Deputy. She's worked in courts and civil divisions. She received the gallantry star for bravery in 2018 and the life-saving award in 2019. Rhonda goes above and beyond her normal duties to make Lancaster County a safer place to work, live, and raise a family. Rhonda, congratulations.
Thank you, guys, and thanks for allowing us to come in this morning.
Thank you.
Are we ready to retire? He's here. Okay. I just wanted to mention, we also have an honorable discharge award for our, for those deputies, those employees who have retired from our office. And you'll notice, Deputy Angelo Casares retired October 3, after 33 years of service. Captain Tommy Trotter retired in October with 28 years of service. Investigator Jim Baird retired on October 18 with 33 years of service. Deputy Sheriff Jerry Hopper retired in November with 37 years of service. And Shawna Baird, having served 32 years with both Lancaster County Corrections and Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. So we lost a total of 163 years of collective experience with these five dedicated individuals. So appreciate their service to all of us. And so I just want to, again, thank the board for allowing us to make these presentations. I really appreciate the indulging us, and I really appreciate the efforts of the deputy sheriffs, the civilians, and our civilian staff who, who just provide exemplary service every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Next item on our agenda is number four, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without any dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. These, unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote to the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. C-21-0194 with Culligan of Lincoln for the supply and delivery of water softener salt. C-22-0159 with Cornhusker State Industries for the annual envelope supply and printing. C-16-0526 with Information First Incorporated for professional services on an as-needed basis to support the county's use of HPERM. C-22-0883 with Tony G. Jensen, Lincoln Community Foundation Incorporated, and Woods Charitable Fund Incorporated for the provision of a community needs assessment of victim survivor services in Lancaster County. C-22-0168 with Ott Oil and Propane for propane. C-23-0062 with World Class Office Installers Incorporated for system installation and moving services. C-21-0533 between Lancaster County, the City of Lincoln, and the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools to increase funding authorized for student-driver safety courses. For B, amendments to the following county contracts for tires, tubes, and tire repairs. They are C-23-0235 with Bauer Built Tire and Services. C-23-0236 with Graham Tire Company of Lincoln LLC. C-23-0187 with Palms Tire Service Incorporated. C-23-0188 with Walker Tire Company of Lincoln. For C, right-of-way contracts with the following. Lynette R. Nelson, Northwest 112th Street and West Fletcher Avenue, in the amount of $1,427.50. Claude and Linda Jensen Revocable Trust to Bennett Road and Cotton Wood Court in the amount of $154. D, utility permit 2501, allowing ALO Communications LLC to install new fiber optic lines in the Village of Kramer. E, change order to county contract C-23-0983 with Yost Excavating for the following. Order one for a substitution item at the request of the contractor, and order two for a change in pipe sizes to accommodate larger diameter manhole. And finally, for F, receive and place and file the following reports through January 2024 from records of information management and the county clerk.
Move approval of the consent items.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Brings us to item five, new business. Five A, an appointment of Brett Ebert to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for a term to expire August 24, 2027.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for being here. I'm honored to be nominated for appointment to the Lincoln Lancaster County Commission, and I look forward to contributing to our great city and county in this manner. I developed an interest in community and regional planning during my time in law school, and I even took an optional graduate-level course on the subject. So it feels full circle to be here this morning, being considered for this appointment. Service on this commission will merge my curious interest in the substantive work of community planning and my personal philosophy of service to my community. My professional background is as an estate planning attorney with Ball, Loudon, Ebert, and Brostrom, a career I thoroughly enjoy. As a partner in this small four-person law firm, I am also a small business owner, and I believe this perspective would serve me well as a member of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Brett, thank you so much for being here and explaining what your interest is. We really do appreciate that. And knowing you personally, I am very happy to move approval of this appointment.
Good. I, it's always a gift to us when we have people volunteer. There's so many boards that do untold good work in our community, you know? It's just so important to have people like yourself stepping forward. So thank you for taking this on in addition to everything else in your life. Ninety-six percent of what you do, we, we will only glimpse a little bit. Four percent will know everything about what you do. But it's all important. So, thank you. I second.
I guess I'd just say, I like appointing people that have big, good professional experience and interest. I think if you were to watch last week's tape, you'll know that this isn't without controversy to enter onto this board. And so really hope that you will bring that good attorney's eye to the board. So I will absolutely vote in support.
Appreciate your willingness to serve here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion passes, four zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to item five B, resolution in the matter of providing for installation of traffic control devices on Panama Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. So the exhibit that I've put up on the overhead shows the two locations, one to the west of the unincorporated village of Holland, also known as Sanitary Improvement District Number Three in Lancaster County, and one on the east side of town. And these are those signs that are warning of speed limit reduction signs. I will also point out that the members of the unincorporated village of Holland went ahead and raised this money to pay for these signs themselves. So there's no cost to Lancaster County.
Very good. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item five C, contract with Top Coat Incorporated to apply chip seal countywide. The cost of the county is not to exceed $894,423.93.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This is part of our annual chip seal program, and chip seal is basically laying down a layer of emulsification and a layer of crust rock chips of some type with another layer of emulsification on top. And we know that this provides for an excellent wearing surface on the asphalt, protecting it from cracking and potholing for absolutely as long as we can. And so it's very cost-effective, and it has helped us improve the condition of our asphalt inventory.
Just a quick question, Pam. Is this what you also put on, on 140, South 148th Street?
We did put a chip seal on South 148th Street a couple of years ago, and it has, it, it's worked very well. On, on 148th Street, it wore a little quicker than we thought, but we also know that we have dramatically more traffic on that road than we thought.
This is, this is a street that I travel very much, and so, yeah, it works very well. I would move approval.
I would second, and this is just one piece of a very big puzzle that Lancaster Engineering does to protect the infrastructure of Lancaster County.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item five D, a contract with Accurate Controls Incorporated to provide VMS system upgrade. Cost of the county is not to exceed $374,321.25.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item five E, contract with Pavers Incorporated to provide Southwest 98th Street, Southwest 100th Street with hot-in-place asphalt recycling. The cost of the county is not to exceed $2,678,797.86.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This is this year's contract for what we call hot-in-place asphalt, where we go by and we, we trim off the top, the top of the asphalt that's not good, and it kind of rolls back into a process, and it's basically cooked back up and laid back down in place. And so it doesn't create any waste, and we're super excited to do this, to stabilize this, a little over six miles of asphalt in Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Five F, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of county engineering to award a bid to Straight Line Stripping Incorporated. Total cost of the county is $155,092.50.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. If you were to compare the two maps in your packet today, you would notice that the chip seal map looks different than the striping map. And hey, that's on purpose, although we do stripe what we've chip sealed. So this is our annual contract for striping. We do try to restripe every other year the county roads. What we're trying to ensure is that those lines on the road can be easily seen. We do use a high visibility paint on those that has a glass bead in it that is very reflective. If you're out in the county at night, or even in the rain, you may notice how, how bright those stripes are.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, four-zero. Item five G is setting the salaries for the following assistant public defenders. We have two, and I'll read them both. David Terrill in the amount of one-hundred-and-two thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents as Attorney Two, effective February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and William Harris in the amount of ninety-nine thousand and seventy dollars and forty cents as a Step Eight Attorney One, effective February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Good morning. Kristi Agar, Lancaster County Public Defender. I asked Dave Terrill to come with me and Will Harris to come with me. We are asking that you grant the step increase that was asked for last week, and I just wanted you to be able to meet them. Dave has worked in the office since twenty-twenty-three, or twenty-twenty-two. When I left, Dave got a whole bunch of my felony cases and basically thrown on him, and so he moved right into the felony docket. And then when Will started, Will started in misdemeanors, but then when I came on in twenty-twenty-three, shortly after that, I think in January, wasn't it, Will?
Yes.
Will moved up to felonies. So both of them are very competent felony attorneys, and I'm just really proud of them and for the hard work that they do. And so I ask that you take our proposal into consideration and grant their step increase.
Their important work. We appreciate your efforts, and I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Thanks for jumping in.
Thank you.
Well, you've put a face to the names.
Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, four-zero. Five H, interlocal agreement with
Thank you so much.
Five H is the interlocal agreement with Cooperative Public Safety Services among the counties of Cass, Gage, Fillmore, Jefferson, Johnson, Lancaster, Nimahe, Odo, Pawnee, Richardson, Saline, Seward, Thayer, and York to establish the Southwest PET Region Planning, Exercise, and Training Group for the purpose of ensuring regional emergency management, coordination, planning, exercise, training, interoperable communications, grant fund administration, dispersion, and mutual aid. The term of the agreement is five years from the date of execution by all parties.
Good morning. Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. This is the renewal of agreement that has been around since about two thousand and six, and what it does is formalize the strong working relationship that I've known in the nearly ten years that I've served as Lancaster County's emergency manager. The two words that come to mind are coordination and cooperation. The most tangible benefit to this is it gives us access to federal dollars through the State Homeland Security Grant Program, SHSP, to fund our regional projects. So moving forward, as I said, it really empowers us to continue the good work that everybody's already doing.
So this coordinates like training and response?
Correct. That's the acronym PET is for Planning, Exercise, and Training, but it's really all-encompassing that each emergency manager, we take care of business on our own, in our own backyard, so to speak, but we also are very mindful of what the rest of us are doing, not only throughout the region but throughout the state. So again, it really gives us eyes on that coordination and cooperation that everybody needs to do a good job. Really, really a force multiplier.
Yeah, yeah. Very handy tool. I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, four-zero. Item five I is an agreement to lease fifty-seven-point-six-nine acres of agricultural land to Andrew Newhar for eighty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents per acre for one year.
Good morning, commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. This is the fourth year that this individual would like to farm the parcel of land that Lancaster County purchased, saving side for the East Beltway.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Carries, four-zero. Item five J, a contract with the YWCA of Lincoln for diversity, equity, inclusion, and consensus-building training for members of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in the amount of twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln in Lancaster County. And this contract is for city and county employees to receive racial equity training by two different facilitators, Karen and then Dr. Marilyn at Wesleyan University. So this is the amount of the contract. The city is paying fourteen thousand of this amount.
What is GARE, the committee, the government?
The Government Alliance on Racial Equity. So this is a national organization that the county joined a little over a year ago, but part of that is that you do different things to make sure that your employees and your policies and your practices are viewed through a racial equity lens, and part of that then is making sure that employees receive training on culturally relative, relevant racial equality, different types of things of that nature. And so as part of that, then, we were able to contract with two local experts in this area to come in and train fifty of our employees. This is the second training. We did the first training last year. It was well-received by both city and county employees. We've been meeting over the course of the last year. HR has been a part of this, as has Kristi in your office, so getting this up and going, making sure that it meets the criteria, I guess, of the National GARE Association and yes.
It's a very good program.
I move approval.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, four-zero. Brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak in items related to county business on the agenda may do so at this time.
This is the final written testimony, and I'm just going to play the five-minute video from the hearing from last week. Okay, Molly Hemingway testified last week at the Zuckerbox Hearing that was held on Wednesday. What you've been given is her full testimony, so here we go.
Instead of an election day where everyone votes at the same time and with the same full set of information, votes are counted quickly and everyone promptly knows and trusts the outcome. We now have lengthy election seasons that can last months prior to and even after election day. The situation is so absurd that we have presidential and gubernatorial debates weeks after some people have already voted. Instead of having total security and a verifiable chain of custody for ballots being issued, cast, and counted, we flood addresses across the country with tens of millions of unsupervised mail-in ballots months ahead of elections, frequently to locations from which voters, if they're even alive, have long since moved. Instead of having election administration that is rigorously nonpartisan and impartial under the law, we have allowed the private takeover of government election offices by partisan oligarchs and their armies of activists who use those offices and their authorities to tilt the election toward favored candidates. Instead of voters being able to vote for the candidate of their choice, powerful interests backed by wealthy oligarchs are working to remove the most popular candidate and the ruling party's chief opponent from the ballot in a move reminiscent of Soviet Russia. And if that weren't enough, instead of the top candidates chosen by the people being able to fully engage in a vigorous campaign heading into an election, we have one side actively attempting to throw its opponent in prison and bankrupt his family, again reminiscent of Soviet Russia. Instead of a system of rule of law that gives Americans the same rights and due process, the Department of Justice and other partisan actors are prosecuting their opposition, whether powerful or lowly, and doing so in places where partisan juries will ensure a quick conviction. Instead of a free and independent press that shares news and information to help inform voters, we have a press that is almost exclusively the arm of one political party and is so corrupt that it is willing to perpetrate hoax after hoax against opposition party members. Instead of a vibrant public square where Americans can debate issues and express their strongly-held views, we have an elaborate censorship industrial complex where the government works hand-in-hand with tech oligarchs to suppress and blacklist debate on all the important issues that contribute to election outcomes. This is something I know firsthand because our government worked with tech companies to censor me for my election reporting. Allowing just one of these attacks to infect our electoral system would be a crisis. Allowing all of them at the same time is an existential threat to our system of self-government. In my bestselling book on how election administration has been co-opted by groups seeking political power, I reported on a new phenomenon in the 2020 election that has already severely eroded trust and needs to be addressed decisively. In the last presidential election, nonprofit groups with very strong ties to the Democrat Party and funded by one of the world's wealthiest and most powerful men, Facebook founder Mark Zuckerberg, took over government election offices, most notably in the Democrat areas of swing states. Since then, the efforts by partisans to further infiltrate government election offices to ensure favorable outcomes have only increased. I look forward to answering questions about how the private oligarch takeover of elections is a threat to our system of self-government.
You may have caught Molly is a journalist, a author, as well as a commentator on news channels. Thank you.
Hey, it's Rob from the Healthy Man Channel. If you want to know how to get hard, just nine seconds and stay hard.
That's not good.
Why is that mute?
Thank you, YouTube.
This is a copy of our state voter rolls. I paid five hundred dollars for it yesterday. Voter rolls are a matter of public record. They fall under public record law. The public already pays the gravy wages and bills for SOS, our SOS office. This disc and the case cost all of one or two bucks, and copying the voter file to the disc takes all of two or three clicks. It's highway robbery. Our SOS office shook me down yesterday, even if they were to provide me with eleven more copies. The sadder part of this is that these rolls are dirtier than a Las Vegas whore. But you won't necessarily see that on this disc because they only allow us a snapshot once a month, and bad actors can easily inflate them with fake voters and then deflate them in between those snapshots because they are online and centralized. Moreover, the SOS can't, won't provide us with a list of everyone who actually votes in a given election, so they are complicit in the fraud. I'm going to play two minutes of a speech by retired Air Force Colonel and cybersecurity export expert Sean Smith, who happens to be a friend of mine. He came to Nebraska, and we sat in a private room around a conference table with six or eight of our so-called senators in March of 2022. Wayne Bennett was there as well. Soft-spoken Sean thoroughly schooled everyone in the room about the absolute impossibility of securing electronic voting systems. I'm going to play you two minutes of Sean Smith.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm not a politician. I'm not a politician, not really a very political person, and I don't mince words, and we have a lot to cover, so I'm just going to move very fast, and I'll just apologize upfront. We don't have time in the presentation really to go slower, and honestly, in the country, we don't have time either, so. So let me tell you, this is what I know. It's a sliver. We could talk for four or five hours about election systems and just scratch the surface. So everybody should be looking at the election system we have. Can you see that? Okay, so what you're looking at there is the part that we're really not talking about yet. It's all machines. You have to understand that. So you have a centralized statewide voter roll that's on networked machines, servers, and has a public-facing internet interface. That's it. That's all I need to know to know that it's blown. That's a centralized statewide voter roll that is mandated by Help America Vote Act. They have these all over the country, and it's not just that you have a public-facing internet interface to it, but multiple organizations have what's called an API or an application programming interface. In other words, a machine-to-machine interface into that voter roll. And I'm telling you this because when people say, well, we have to clean up the voter rolls, it's true that they're not following the law. It's true that they're not in good faith maintaining them in accordance with Title Fifty-Two that requires that the voter rolls be both secure and accurate. That's a requirement imposed on the Secretaries of State who've received the Help America Voting Act and CARES Act funding to maintain those voting systems. What nobody's going to tell you, but I'm going to tell you, is you cannot clean those rolls. You're sweeping a dirt floor. Those things can be changed in microseconds, and they are changed in microseconds, and we've got proof of that happening in multiple states where voters are shifted between counties, they're made active, they're made inactive, they're deleted off the rolls after voting and then brought back in a month later. These things cannot be maintained. They cannot secure them. Then the next thing you're looking at in that slide is HP Industrial Page-Wide Press. This is what vendors like Runbeck are using to print your ballots, twenty thousand ballots per hour. But it's not just that they can print ballots. Those aren't just blank ballots that can be printed. They have to have access to the voter rolls, and they do. That means they also have to have access because they're running the automatic signature verification machines. They have access to the voter rolls.
All right, you get the point. Our, they can deny that these machines are online, tabulators, but they cannot deny that the, but they're denying them by lying. They cannot deny that the voter rolls are online. Anyone who thinks that our elections are secure is a fool. That's my final comment. We all need to wake up before before you know what.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Please proceed.
Item seven, announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at eight-thirty a.m. in Room one-twelve of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, at nine a.m. in Room one-twelve of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish at lancaster.nne.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen-hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.nne.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.